To approve the agenda.
So moved.
Have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Second, any comment? Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, tonight we'll have public comment to begin our meeting. Let me tell you about that, the mayor and city council welcome any public comments at this time. This portion of the meeting is only for comments from citizens on any city issue, not for questions or debate. If you have questions, you will find contact information for all council members on the city website, or you may contact city hall staff. Thank you for attending our council meeting, and is there anyone here who would like to make public comment? Okay, so it looks like we got about four people, why don't we start with you, and then we'll work our way down the line.
Okay.
That be alright? If you'll come up? I'm sorry, one more thing, I need your name, if you'll come up to the podium here, and we have a microphone for you.
Yes, sir.
Give us your name, and you do have a five-minute time limit for all comment.
Okay. My name is Trish Framp, I live at 125 Web Bartley Road, right across the street from the new factory that West Point is getting ready to allow to be built. In 2006, '07, when Kia came to town, Mr. Linier wanted to zone that area as industrial, the community banded together, we fought it, they put a hiatus on it for a year, and then all of a sudden it became mixed use. There wasn't signage, there wasn't posting, nothing. However, the former city planner, I cannot remember his name.
Sammy Osborne?
Yes, sir. Assured us at that time, it's only going to deduct his offices, maybe a park, maybe a daycare, no industry would go in there. The dirt work has been approved by the city, incentives have been offered, I've seen a plan, a blueprint for what they're putting in there, and it is a factory, and it is industrial. And my way of life, my property value, everything that I have worked for, where I've raised my kids, is being thrown in the garbage, it's trash. No one will buy a house across the street from a factory, and I only have two acres, so it's not commercially appealing. If there is anything, I don't think there is, because it's been so long now since you allowed it to be mixed use, unbeknownst to the community, if we can do anything about it now. But I, if I thought of getting on my hands and knees and begging each one of you individually to not put a factory across the street from my home, I would do it. It's, I just, I can't believe, it's a rural community, most of the residents there have been there for decades, generations. Mrs. Hale, she's not here tonight, oh, there she is. Her parents bought her house that she lives in now with bushels of corn, that's how long we've been there, they've been there. It's a beautiful, it was once recollic community, we have overcome a number of hardships with the garbage, the litter, the people parking in our front lawns, and leaving their lunch in their booze bottles, and the traffic, and the racing. It usually only happens at shift change, so that's what, five or 10 minutes, we can put up with that. The litter is bad, if you don't clean it up, once a week, it looks like Skid Row. It really does, I've been, we've accepted that. There's plenty of space all along Kia Parkway, and all along the boulevard, where the city can approve a factory to go in to support these people. There's no reason why you have to allow that in our little tiny recollic community, where there's houses, and families, and kids, and dogs, and people that have worked all their life to build something that they're proud of and happy to be in, and if I'm begging you, please don't allow that to happen. If there's anything else I can say or do, I will, I'm going to keep fighting until they finish building it, so remember me, I'm Trish Framp.
Thank you. Alright, then we will take the next public comment, which was starting at the left, I don't recall who was.
Oh, it's me.
Okay. Alright, state your name, please.
My name is Wanda Davis, I reside at 408 East Sixth Street, West Point. Thank you, Your Honor, and city council members and staff. I purchased a home in March following the death of my husband. I made a decision to come back to my hometown. I love West Point, always have, always will. Since moving into my home, I have become aware and a witness of two things that concern me today, the possible abuse of dogs, and children playing in a busy street on Sixth Street. It terrifies me. When I was outside my home, I kept hearing constant dog barking, my neighbor, Miss Nicole, behind me, we wondered where it came from. I contacted Mr. Brooks, the animal control officer, and may I say, he's very nice. Once he came out, we missed each other, but he was kind enough to call me, and said, "Mrs. Davis, a dog barking inside a fence, there's nothing we can do." I appreciate that phone call, I said, "Okay." A few days ago, the owner of the property next door to me informed me of the following: six puppies in an above-ground cage, the mother of the puppies tied to a line running up and down. I was witnessed by puppies and the possible mother dog tied to a line running up and down, the puppies standing in feces in a cage above the ground. Saturday of this past week, I saw a silver tarp was covered the top of this cage, and I don't know if you recall how hot it was Saturday. It was very disturbing to me that the puppies was held there. The second concern, and will always be my concern before any complaint, is the safety of children. I have watched in horror several children playing basketball on Sixth Street, the gold is on the top of the property of the city by the way. I called twice, police officers did come out, but before they arrived, the children were rushed back into the home. I have watched these children be hit by a parked truck almost, and a black car. It terrifies me, I don't want to have to go out there, I put many years in the emergency room, I don't want to go out there and have to help with a child that has been injured. We have to do something, and I can see now that's on the agenda. Thank you. I want to thank the city, I'm seeking today a positive direction for these concerns I have, you will see me quite often here because I love West Point. And I wish to thank Mr. Brooks, Mr. Smith, thank you, I want to thank you all, and the police department, I've had some other issues, you could not ask for a nicer staff than you have on this police department. And if I can do something, cook them a cake, that I can do without killing them, honestly I can. But this, I'm just asking for help on these items, I am concerned, I love West Point, whatever I can do, and we've got to go in a positive direction, not a negative direction. Thank you again.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next person on the agenda, please come up.
I have people holding up pictures for me who can't speak. My name is Jasmine Garrett, good afternoon, council. I am property owner of 406 East Sixth Street. I request that all comments and questions to your servant until the end, so that I can get the full five minutes allotted to me. I am going to tell the story of the battle that I have fought for over two years, involving animal abuse occurring on my neighborhood property, the home on the west side of my property. When I moved, first moved into my home, I noticed dogs being chained up 24/7 in their backyard, barking and yelling all year long, hearing them barking five times a day. We offered them to build a fence for free, in exchange for allowing us to stay and raise animals, they declined. I reached out to the police, and they sent Mr. Brooks. Each time Mr. Brooks came out, he claimed that there were no dogs out there. This was very confusing to me, being that I heard them out there 24/7. After multiple attempts to bring Mr. Brooks back, I realized that right before he would come, the animals would disappear. This increased my suspicion that these dog owners are notified before Mr. Brooks comes out for calls. I am not the only citizen of West Point that this has happened to. We reached out to Mayor Steve Tremel via email, he forwarded the email to the chief of police, he said it would get straightened out. He said there were yet again, no animals out there, and that he would follow up with me. I explained to him that I am a merchant marine, and that I was going to be away at sea for some time, I would have no ability to talk to him, and asked him to reach out to Evie Kettler, so she could assist him with the issue. One of my tenants wrote me a long message of having witnessed three dogs in the street, strutting around with zero aggression, and being shot down by the police in the street. They quickly picked up their bullet shells, this occurrence still haunts them to this day, and they had to move because of it. I came back last month to see that yet again, there were dogs chained up in the yard, these are a rotation of pitfalls. This time I noticed there was breeding, two dogs were chained up in a litter of six puppies inside what resembled an after-rat hutch, these animals cried 24/7, I had no other choice but to call 911 for animal abuse. After the police left, Vincent Kirsten, a jury lawyer, came onto my property and was threatening me. This man has five felonies, including criminal background of two kidnapping adults, possession of a salt-off shotgun, disorderly conduct, battery, and two kidnapping, um, excuse me, and two incidents of participation in criminal street gang, aggravated assault, breaking probation twice, once out of state, and three incidents of aggravated assault with a gun. My boyfriend witnessed it and called 911. The same police officers came back and explained to them the history of all this, the officers did not know the law, and they said there was, there was nothing they could do besides reach out to animal control, and Mr. Brooks did not come out. Sergeant Sally stated that it takes three verbal warnings in order for them to give a citation, this ordinance needs to be changed to one warning. Lord knows how many dogs endured this abuse while I was away. I called the police department the same day yet again to have them come out and give them a citation. The chief of police and Captain Carter came to my door, the chief of police avoided the question of why again, contacted Miss Evie when I was out at sea, they said they were going to have the father of the owners, dog owners, come and pick up the dog, I asked them to make sure that the dog's laundry was kept up with it. The next day I saw that the mother was now in a trolley system, the dog mother, which is illegal, and was caught in her doghouse with it flipped to the side, which has no bottom to it, and was unable to get out of the flipped doghouse. I went to the police and informed them that the dog was being stopped in a trolley system, and that the trolley system was illegal. The police never addressed the trolley system. On June 23rd, I saw the dog was still in the trolley system, the puppies were crying for their mother nonstop, sitting in their own fecal matter, and covered in flies. I took a video of this on my property, a man came out and started yelling at me, me and my field then yelled over the fence, "You are going to get it tonight." My neighbor, Wanda Davis, who just spoke was doing garbage, heard the threat and called 911. After exposure on social media, the dog was placed in a four-by-five chain-linked fence, she is sitting in her own feces and mud, there is no bottom to her house, so during these flash floods, she has been laying in mud, water, feces, and is suffering. I should not have to resort to exposure on social media to make sure the police officers are enforcing the laws. I should not have to wait two years for animal abuse to be addressed. I should not have to listen to puppies crying and dogs barking 24/7, I should not have my life threatened for protecting animals. The police and animal control need to be held accountable for their non-decencies. Thank you for taking the time to listen to my struggles, and thank you for making sure these laws are enforced promptly and properly.
Thank you. Alright.
Good evening, council, my name is Evie Kettler. First I want to say, West Point got it right, when you pass the law that bans tethering, and for that, you deserve to be applauded. Are many of us out here fighting for these, that same law? But I'm here today because I don't feel that the law is going to be enforced. I have provided you with the duties of animal control and his responsibilities. I've also provided you with the pictures from 2019 that I may have emailed to the mayor, and I've provided you pictures of dogs today, and those same dogs that we are referring to now. So how does this affect the citizens of West Point? Animal control is a tax, is paid by taxpayer. When he doesn't do his job, it's wasted money. Not only is the tethering law being, not being enforced, the law says that you can only have four dogs. Well, these puppies are being cut away from their mother, they are no longer feeding, so are they, are they added dogs now, because they're not with their mother. So how's backyard breeding affect the citizens? Sometimes, oftentimes, these dogs end up in shelters, and guess who puts the bill for that? The citizens, people like me, people like Jas, because I donate my money, I donate my time, I have a lot of rescue friends, I know how much it costs to vet them, feed them, house them, and then spend our time trying to adopt them out to people who are going to take care of them and keep them forever. And, so how does this affect your property value? No one's going to want to live next door to a barking, dangerous, aggressive dog, it is simply dangerous. I have witnessed it myself, I founded a nonprofit organization that helps tether dogs, and unfortunately, I forgot to bring my chain here, so you could actually see what it looks like and how it feels. I have witnessed it for myself, how they live, how it looks, how they bark, how they cry, how they beg for help. So, also, I want to say that my life, my life has also been threatened. Why? Because I spoke up, just like hers. When you are an animal advocate, unfortunately, you have to deal with people threatening your life. I received a message on Facebook of a knife, a dog, and a middle finger. How would you feel if you received that just because you speak up for something that cannot speak up for itself? I also received a message from someone who I was told is a police officer of West Point, and I am going to complain, make a complaint to the chief about that, to see if that really is a West Point police. He did not threaten me, but he offended me, in my opinion. So oftentimes, these dogs, people that do this to their dogs are associated with illegal activities, dog fighting. In my opinion, if the intentions were good for these puppies, they wouldn't be living in a cage above the ground like a rabbit cage, away from their mother, in their own feces, crying for their mother. The dogs wouldn't be living on a 10-pound chain, I have felt of these chains, I know what it's like. So I'm here as someone who has actually witnessed it myself, over and over again. I've attached examples of ordinances that I would like you to consider adopting, one is shelter requirements, and the other one is enclosure size requirements, and I actually had that passed in the city of La Grange. I think that it'll keep a dog from being in a small kennel, like the ones you see in the picture, those are, that is a dog in your city. Those dogs were chained up to their kennels. All that fits in that kennel is that big doghouse. I would also love to help you enter something into the ordinance so that dogs do not have, puppies do not have to live in rabbit cages, away from their mothers, that is not in the ordinance, so there is really nothing Mr. Brooks can do. But if Mr. Brooks is not going to do his job, then you need to find somebody who will. And I also went around your city looking to see if I could find these other dogs, and I have to say, that I was very happy that I did not see them all over the place, I did see a handful of them out there, and I want to get those addresses to Mr. Brooks because I would like those addressed. And thank you for allowing me to be here.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else for, excuse me, was there anyone else that had public comment this evening? Okay, well, we thank you very much, and I know that the council appreciates all this information, and we're going to certainly look over everything you gave us, and take it in consideration, absolutely. And we have a presenter, he's going to come up in just a second, everyone's welcome to stay, we encourage you to stay, we like attendance on our council meetings, but you don't have to. So, I just want to give you that little out, if anybody wants to, but Lenwood, come on up, you're the next presenter. Good afternoon.
Council, community, it's a pleasure to be here. Tiara's heading all over everywhere today, so we got here just in time. I know we're here to talk about the Soul Program, which I believe is extremely important today, trying to look at how to save on utilities, how to improve the homes that we live in. I have a focus on low, moderate-income communities, so what is Soul? Soul is savings on utilities, long-term, long-term, not short-term. And how do we break that down? Can I have one here?
Speak a little louder.
Little louder? Okay, I'll do my best then. How do we do that? We basically look at a utility bill, we analyze what the normal cost might be for a data analyst, and evaluate, should it be 200 a month, should it be 500 a month? What does that impact have on the community? And normally we look at low, moderate-income communities. Now, low, moderate-income communities does not mean poor, it means that they have an income in that low bracket, and with it, that challenge of utility cost impacts them more. They pay the same as someone who's upper class, or both upper classes, sometimes we would say, is that fair? Because we have a right to heat and air, living in an environment that's good for us. So with that, the Soul Program was implemented. Many people have lots of ideas of how this is to act, but Groundswell, who I work for is the chief program officer out of Washington DC, and our CEO, who is Michelle Moore, who is from La Grange, Georgia, born and raised, our mission is to focus on the segment of the community. Why? Because they're impacted amongst, and in what ways? In health, in school, education services, that they would normally pay for out of their income, ends up being utilized more in utilities than in improving the environment a family would normally live in. So, let's talk about the process. Groundswell is partnered with E-Utility, and E-Utility helps in ensuring that we do a proper assessment of homes. But how do we get into the homes? Tiara? Tiara comes in, and she sits down with that family member or family, she talks about that program, and what it will do to improve the standard of living in the community or their home, and the impact of the dollars that will be saved economically, improving that standard. E-Utility comes in and assesses the home, and they look at, how do we make sure the envelope, the term that they use when they go in and look at a home, is sealed properly and meets the need of the community to improve the home of weatherization. So what does that mean? I said a mouthful. We make sure that the good air, heat and air, does not escape out of the home, which rises the cost even more, real simple. With that, the evaluation is done, and we may find in the homes that improvements need to be done to get that home to qualify to be in the Soul Program. So with that, we look at other agencies. Those agencies come and actually benefit improving the home in regards to sealing it, corking it, maybe changing our windows, improving the roofs, those types of things. Who are some of those agencies? I'm going to give you a number one participant, habitat humidity, they have funds that focus on these type of activities, and their mission is aligned with Groundswell. After that is done, we take them through a process and make sure that they understand the documentation that they're going to sign. How often do you go in a home and you find out, they've signed the paperwork and don't even know what the warranties are? Bless along what they're getting as a benefit, but someone told them it was okay and they just put it on paper. Well, we don't work that way. You're going to know and understand the impact and what the return is for the investment. Now, someone says, well, it won't cost anything. We don't charge the resident, we don't. Hear me clear, the resident does not pay anything. So the question you have to ask, which I would ask, the house pays for itself? It's paid by the savings that we cut out of the utility bill. We find that many low, moderate-income communities have homes that don't meet the standard. They're going to be paying anywhere from four, five, $700 a month in utilities. So guess what? If I can save three or $400, will the upgrades for weatherization pay for itself? Of course. But we also don't stop there. We turn around and we also educate the resident or the family on how to live differently. If we're used to leaving our doors open, windows up, turning the air as low as possible, we're cheating the system. So what? There must be a life change. So that is implemented as well. We also do an assessment over 12 months or 13 months to find out what are the normal habits and flow of using the electricity that is in that home. That's important too. It's not just improving the home, it's what the usage is. I just did a presentation earlier today outdoors with Channel 3, and they discussed, what can you do during this time of the year? How do you save on your utility bill? And we laughed about it as she had me on the camera. I said, do you all remember when your parents would say, "Did you shut that door?" Everybody heard it, everybody's been through it.
Turn that light off.
Come on, man. So, you understand the principle. Many times in a home, you have the screen door, and you hear its shut, but you never hear the other door shut. And then you always hear the stories of, if you leave both in the front and the back, you get ventilation. No, you don't, you get more heat. Okay, and if it's not moving, it's hotter. We have to understand and teach these principles. We talk about using blinds, and how heat comes up on the front and is in the back. These are things that have to be taught, if you're not used to doing them. And with that, we learn how to save money. Talk about fans, the ceiling fans, using them with air conditioning. Why? Because you draw the heat up off, and that means it cools faster. And you don't realize that. Sealing the envelope means corking all the open spots, so the air is not easing out of your home as fast as it's cooling your home. These are part of the Soul Program. We believe it's a successful program. We didn't say, you're going to save $100 a month or $200 a month, we said we're going to improve the envelope of your home. Weatherization means that, what? We take care of the roof, put all the insulation in it, we start looking at windows, we look at doors, we make sure that those are tight. How do we get the money? We are under a program that we would love you all to let us bring in. USDA has provided funding. We said, well, who's going to take that responsibility? Groundswell takes on the responsibility, 100%. Made no bones about it, and I sent a letter with my CEO, signed by both of us, this cost is not incurred on the saving anyway. It is on us to ensure that we pick the homes carefully, ensure that the work is done appropriately, and that the savings impact paying that loan back off in 20 years. Some say, well, will that affect the homeowner? No. Why? It's based upon usage. Even if they sold their home, it's still on the utility bill, not the home. Everybody got me? Now, I could do it like we do in the church, repeat, it's not on the family, it's on the utility bill. It's clear, and it must be understood, so that if you share it with someone, they can clearly understand. understand a direct path to get to a milestone. No cost on the family, no cost on the city. The debt is on the nonprofit for twenty years, so that it's paid. And here's one factor that is a cost factor. When you put all of those upgrades in, there's a warranty on them. Let's be clear. And if you don't put the filters in, the system will go bad. They're responsible for that. The renter or the owner, to put those filters in, quarter. Are they expensive? No, they're not. Very cheap. But sometimes we need to follow up and make sure it's getting done. Okay? Now, that's ten years to pay it off, twenty years to do the loan. In ten years, all that equipment is done. We got twenty years so that we can be on loan payments. Follow me? So that we can balance the costs and provide some savings to the resident. That is normally about twenty percent that they will see in their monthly bill. Along with the cost being wrapped up in the savings below that, eighty-twenty. Eighty to pay it off and upgrade the home, twenty percent saving to the family in cost. Is it a lot of money? No, but is the quality of life changed? Yes. I'm gonna open up for any questions you might have for me. Hopefully I've explained it carefully enough that everyone can pick up on where I'm going. Please feel free, I'll take a few questions.
Lenwood, can you speak a little bit about E-Utilities that partner?
E-Utilities basically is the, as in any, you would have Georgia Power. But in some cities, they have a private utility. E-Utility is that one that we use in LaGrange. It would be different if we were here, it might be Georgia Power. Follow me? Georgia Power would sit down at the table and say, we like the program. And we have talked with Georgia Power, we'll be talking with Georgia Power next week. So based upon the city, the locale, you have a different utility. LaGrange is very different. They turn back around and then put all of those weatherization components into that home. And they stand behind what we put in paper and writing to the customer, so they can hold us accountable. So, utility coming, I mean, E-Utility comes in and they say, we need to fix this, 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 and this. We're gonna cork this, we're gonna put in insulation in the roof. And based upon those improvements, we can bring down the utility bill by two, three hundred dollars. We turn back around and sign that agreement with E-Utility. We then turn back around and sign an agreement with the resident or the landlord or the owner, saying this is where we're at and that's documented. So, if it doesn't, then there's fallout back on the road. Groundswell and E-Utility. Not on the city, not on the council. Just the primary components that put it into that Soul Program.
So being in West Point, E-Utilities is not here, but that's who we would use if we were to join the program? We would use... And who do we have? It's not Georgia Power?
We have our own, it's our own utilities.
We would sit down with them and work the agreement. So you would have your own.
So at one time, okay, go, I'm sorry. At one time, it was mentioned that that loan would have to be in the city's name. So you're saying that has changed?
It never was. I don't know where that ever came from. And I sent a letter which you all should have from last week, identifying clearly, there was never a loan in your name. What we wanted was the signing of the MOU, saying that you have partnered with us and you would like to have the services. There is no cost in that letter or in the MOU to the city in any way.
So the agreement would be signed by someone that's actually renting a home? Or would it be the homeowner that would sign the agreement?
The owners would sign for themselves, the landlord would accept along with the renter, us coming in to do it. It has to be a complete agreement. The renter must want it and the landlord has to approve letting us bring in the upgrades. And this is important to understand. If it's a landlord, we make them sign the MOU too.
So what if there's a change in their ownership? Then what happens? Yes.
Yes, then we would sit down and talk with that landlord. But let me also explain what MOU is. The MOU is to protect the renter. If we come in and do all these upgrades, we wanna ensure that the rentee that's in that home does not see an increase in their what?
Rent fee.
Ah. At least that renter as long as they're there can't see an increase. Except a normal increase that would come. But you know, when you do that much improvement, there's always the risk that within six months, oh, well, you got a better facility, we're gonna raise that about another fifteen, twenty dollars. No. You're gonna sign that agreement and say that tenant is not gonna feel that improvement.
For how long?
As long as we, the one that we've been giving out, as long as they're in. But I also stated, normal increases we can't touch. But increases that are based upon improvement, we ask them to honor.
So what do you...
And we've done the same.
What is your understanding of normal increase?
Well, I can only go by what they've done in the past, the record that they have. And that's the only thing we can look at. So if they do an increase of three percent every year, that would be normal. If they turn back around and raise it to ten, we would say you breached our agreement.
And what would happen then?
With that, we would have to turn back around and ask why and how come. And we would ask for some pressure from the council to play a part in that. We can't enforce law, this is not our city. But you all can impact that change. And that's the same that I say to LaGrange as well. There are things that, if you want to have a change of life and equality of life, it's a two-fold relationship. We can enact and make the improvement. We can make the ask and the agreement that you will support. But the rest of it, we have to support both ways, from you and us to make it work.
How many people in LaGrange has actually signed up for the program?
Um, we have...
Right now, in the pipeline, we have a bit twenty people, the pipeline that is completed. And then we also have probably there, I need to assess about a bit twenty.
This is a pilot program in LaGrange. Our goal is sixty homes or rental facilities. And our landlords, I believe we have three landlords that have already signed, well, sometimes have signed not to increase their rent based on the improvements we've done in the home. Now, you know, that wasn't no easy task. We had to go and sit down, oh, wow, wow, yes, I said, well, you're not doing the improvement? Help me out here. The improvements are coming free. If anything, we're saving you money long-term, just as the Soul Program states. We're saving you on the long side of this project. You're making money, 'cause you don't have to do the improvement.
So do you have someone in place that's act, that will actually do the billing? For the program?
What billing?
The adjustments or whatever, or is that left up to city staff?
No, the city staff doesn't do any of this. As we come in, the assessments are done, the improvements are handled on our side of the house. And the savings show up on your utility bill. So you'll see your savings.
So will you get that information from the homeowner or renter? Or how do you, how do you know?
Good question.
Are you collecting the money or is it...
No, we don't collect any money.
That's part, you want that, that's part of the utility bill, correct?
It's all in the utility bill.
So that's what you're asking?
You're right, right.
So there's no money exchanged here at all. What happens after the improvements, within three months or six months, you should see a savings.
And how would you know how much they saved each month?
What we would do is, when we come in, you all, in that agreement, allow our data people to have access to utility bills. And with that, we have, we get to see long-term and short-term the impact of what we have done. So, as we've done in LaGrange, it's been advertised, some of the savings we've done. We come in and like I said, over thirteen months, summer, spring, winter, fall. I know what you've been spending. I know what your costs are. Now I go back after we've done the improvements and I can start looking at the quarter again and say, okay, we hit it. If we didn't hit it, you gonna call me anyway, 'cause you ain't said, you're not having no savings. So we're gonna get a rent. But we now have the capability to look at it because we put it into our dashboard where we are able now to give you a report of what those savings look like over here. We also look at the health improvements, because we go back in and see, if we do a little report, how are you, well, how many people get sick in your home? How often? You come back and ask you again, has that occurred yet? So all of that goes into a database that gives us a good snapshot of what's happening in every city that we go into.
Could we possibly get a snapshot? It's my last question, bro. Last one.
That's okay.
I'm sorry, last one. How, is there a way we can get a snapshot of the program so far from LaGrange?
No, that's, that's their information and then that they would have to give us permission to share that information in another city. In every city we go in, it's just like you're giving us your utility bill. I'm not, I, we're under an agreement that we would never share that with another city. What we would do is, those agreements are to protect the customer, protect you. What we do do is, we have personal entries that are done by community folk that are published on our website where they talk about the savings that they have established over that period of time. And some homes have spent two hundred million dollars a month. Well, they're not gonna go down and tell you two or three hundred dollars a month just to make us happy. They're gonna tell you that because it's actually happening in their home. And we publish that on a monthly, on a regular basis on our blog as well as on our website.
A lot of the citizens are saying that this is a free program. So I think I heard you say that you will go sit down with the homeowners to let them know that it's not, it's not free and there's no charge, is what they're thinking. My question is, if it's a renter home, so would you, you're going to sit down with the landlord and the tenant at the same time?
No, we sit down with the landlord first before we go in.
Okay. So if the landlord decides they want to do this and it's between the landlord and the tenant, whether the tenant wanna continue to be a renter, is that correct?
It's a two-fold, and you're right on point with your question. The landlord has to first say yes.
Right.
Every tenant has a right to say no or yes. So when we go in, first we have that permission from the landlord to go onto his property, his property. Then we sit down on top of the tenant and say, look, here's the program. Are you willing to allow us to do these upgrades in your home? So it's two-fold, both have to say yes. The landlord can't just say, you can come in my house.
Uh, real quick, um, I'd like to hear what you're hearing so far. And listening to what you're saying and some of the questions, I would have to ask, you know, this could lead to some unethical things from landlords. Hey, if I got a tenant, and I just want you to, I'm pretty sure you probably don't experience this already, and let me... Hey, uh, you go to the landlord, they go to the tenant, tenant said, no, I don't wanna participate with that, or whatever. Landlord calls back sixty days, hey, uh, you got, I'm giving you this, your eviction notice or whatever. Oh, don't renew the lease. Call you back, hey, I got a tenant that wanna do it and I'm, no. How do you respond to that situation? 'Cause I'm sure that can happen, do that still encourage you, you just wanna get it done or whatever.
We've not ever had that problem.
I'm pretty sure it probably haven't happened yet.
That's it.
You have to, now...
That's just one of, no, that's a high...
But I'll put it this way, you're fair to ask that question. I don't know any perfect program in this country or in this universe that does not have a situation here and there.
Yeah, no, I'm just...
We're looking at the masses.
I'm just looking at, my thing is, is I would hope that, hey, you wouldn't participate with that landlord, that landlord or whatever, in that situation.
If that situation were to occur, we would knock away.
Yeah.
Um, we have had situations where the landlord, it's been difficult. And, 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 let's just be frank. There are landlords who look at this and say, what are you doing? Why is this happening? And it took three or four meetings to get to that table and get that signature. But I find that the more difficult they are, when they sign it, I got their word. When they sign it too easy, you should be a little nervous. So, all I can say is the program has been very blessed so far. Uh, we're on point, we got close to our first thirty.
Hi, I'm calling you.
And I wanna close down with pilot by the end of July for LaGrange. And then we will open it to all of LaGrange. We came in with a pilot first, why? We needed to learn where we were at. We needed to understand some of the hurdles that we would incur. When you rush into something and you think it's gonna be perfect, that's when you already know you're gonna waste a whole lot of money and have a lot of issues. So we put a small settlement. And from there, it being Calumback, being in LaGrange, all of the surrounding areas of the city, you get a taste in the temperature of what it looks like when you go into that city. We would do the same here, but we're a little wiser. We understand the market, we understand our homes. We understand a lot of things that we didn't know the first time we came in. So we're a little bit ahead of the ball, but every city's different. So you come in with a fresh set of eyes and don't make assumptions.
Did I understand you to say that you had a goal of sixty homes in LaGrange?
Yes.
Now, what would the, what is the projected goal for West Point? If it's sixty in LaGrange, which is ten times our size, what's the goal for West Point?
When you all were signing our MOU, we all put our team to work and come up with a number that fits this community. We don't start work until someone says we can come in and do work. First, we have to assess the utilities. And from that, we're looking what that list is and we'll, we'll have a great line that says, ah, they've got fifty, they got two hundred homes that basically fit that parameter. Then we'll turn back around and state, alright, I've got two hundred homes, let's do thirty.
Who's responsible for getting you the information on the utilities, say?
Your utility officer provides us with that list.
So they would give you a listing of our customers?
Yes.
But, that, see, I guess I have a concern with that. We're not, I asked about looking at a list from LaGrange. But you're gonna have someone working for you that's gonna come in and want to look at records from our city utilities. Uh, that's confidential information. So is there another way that maybe the person that's in that house can provide the utilities list to you?
What we do, and your question is well taken. Most systems allow you to dissect whatever information it could be. I don't know about your city, that's just why I answered your question the way I did. Each city is different. And with that, they will ask a series of information that's required for us to do work. LaGrange gave us a complete list. And in it, we signed certain requirements to get that list. In it, we inputted it into our system. And then it showed us, as we break it down, who are the high users. Alright? From that high user list, we then turn back around and look at where they live. We send out the marketing material to them. If they're renters, we go to the landlord first. If it's homeowners, we send it to the homeowners first. We get a response. Let's say you have a special event, we put up a table. And in that table, they can come and sign up for being in it. And that automatically qualifies them. There's no credit involved, which we explain to them. All you have to do is say you want this in your home.
But don't you think twenty years is a long time to be obligated? I mean, some people, houses are paid for less than twenty years.
This obligation is not on the tenant, which I stated before, it's on Groundswell. As long as you use, let's say you don't use your energy for a year. You don't have a risk. It's when the utility energy is on, it pays for itself.
So it's twenty years of usage? So it's twenty years of usage?
No, it's ten years of usage, but we have twenty years to pay. So let's say for, for your home, ah, you decide to go to the island, to the winter for the winter years, uh, winter time and come on back, uh, when the weather's good. So do you get a charge because you're not using your utilities for maybe two or three months? Not at all.
Unless you turn it off.
But when you come back, you can turn it off, it doesn't matter, it's when you turn it back on. So when you turn it back on, it starts paying for itself. When USDA says, we go in ten years, everybody's not gonna finish paying for their utilities for the improvements. We give you twenty years interest for it. And over that time, everything should be paid off. So that gives that fluctuation for that tenant who doesn't use their utilities every year or for two or three months out of the year, we learn some other things that go with this. Some people weren't using their utilities. So we had to buffer that too. You know why? Their utilities costs were so high, they only were using the electric heaters in a room. So we had to factor that in. Because now we're gonna put in all this upgrade, we need to make sure that it pays for itself. So there's a lot that goes into it. One question will not answer, one answer will not answer every question.
I guess what I'm struggling with is with a eighty-twenty plan.
Yes, sir.
Where you, a hundred percent of the savings, eighty percent of it goes to, uh, factor out debt. And twenty percent is seen as savings. I almost don't feel as if anybody will feel a savings. I mean, I work with people and I have for thirty years, helping them pay their utilities when they get fixed. When they're eight hundred and a thousand dollars behind, there's, there's not a lot of fixing, to tell you the truth. And so, I don't think a person sitting behind this dais is not compassionate, nor do they, uh, wish to not help other people.
Right.
Or to see, uh, utilities lowered or homes improved. I think that's been a stated goal of the council for decades. Well, I think the, I think the problem is, it almost sounds too good to be true. And when you start hearing things that sound too good to be true, and you start trying to rationalize the way you have to pay bills versus an eighty-twenty system, I don't think twenty percent, uh, amounts to a whole lot. And, and it may for some people, I'm not saying that, I think it's a wonderful starting place, I'm sure, but.
But you're getting on a point, and I, I can appreciate what you're saying. So why don't we start with what you have to give to pay for those utility bills that people can't pay? I'm gonna start right there. If I brought a savings to the program, you're paying less to those people who can't pay the utility bill. Because if I dropped it by two or three hundred a month, times twelve, that's about twenty-four hundred dollars you're not gonna have to pay. If I improve the facility that they're living in or the home, and they're getting twenty percent, and if that's no more than twenty to thirty dollars, can I buy some groceries with that stuff? We have to understand some, some real basic concepts here. If you don't have that much money in the first place, and I've worked in a lot of homes, DC, Chicago, New York. So I know when, uh, low margin income person go shopping, and a person with discretion in their cash go shopping, who can find the best deals? And who brings home the most food with a twenty dollar bill? The low margin income person. Not the one with discretion in her cash. So those are factors you need to look at. And when you talk about utility bills, I used to run a collaborative in Washington DC, Ward Six, all public housing, just not. And what you said about paying those utility bills, they can be a ten, twelve, fourteen thousand dollars. And a folk run in real quickly, you know why? They first have, weren't educated on how to keep the bill down. Maybe the doors open, the windows down, the, the air conditioning on. But if I save them four thousand dollars a year by putting in the equipment, how many more families can you share paying off their bill? So it, it can turn, all other ways, not just one way. So, and for what you say in regard, and I love answering questions, cause I've worked in this too long not to be able to answer. When you think about it, when it's not, when it's not, when you said, the word you said was, um, if it sounds too good to be true. Well, there's factors that you need to take into consideration. I said, you pay no cost for this program.
Now I think that's what's scary to some of us, is we've seen few problems, few programs that we've had to pay nothing for. And it's not us paying for it.
That's right.
Period. When we pay for something, citizens pay for it. And so we have to make doubly sure.
So I will do this one, one more time, I wanna belabor myself for you. USDA provides us with a million dollars interest rate for twenty years to pay it back. We have four cities that we have focused on currently. You do not sign that contract for that million dollars, Groundswell. So let's dismiss what you're paying, cause you're paying zero. The customer does not sign a contract to pay for the upgrades of their home. So let's dismiss, that's zero. The utility bill is based on the savings that Groundswell puts into the home with the utility company that lowers that bill. So let's say, now stop right there and say this. If they don't change one habit in their home, when we put in those cost-saving measures, they gonna save money. That's why we look at a thirteen-month period in four seasons. So if they keep doing the same things they were doing, even with the upgrades, they're gonna save money. So the bill will be paid off of the savings and utilities, which means there are zero costs to the customer. I went through four scenarios, all of whom come out with zero. The city, the customer, Groundswell has the responsibility, and they signed the debt, not you. So, I will even save you money on who you have to pay and hope in paying that utility cost. I can't say it any better than that. Now, say solar, we do the same thing. I applaud your concern about free. And the solar edge, everyone said, oh God, it can't be free, it can't be free. My own church, Fort Dupont Park Seventh Day Advent Church, my home, born and raised, they looked at me, the trustee board looked at me, the pastor said, this gonna be free, brother Coleman? And I said, if you pare down, you tear up the contract. They said, we, we ain't gonna have to build it? I said, no, you can go ahead and build it. But guess what? After I did the church, I got the senior citizen facility, I got the school, I got the church across the street. Because some things can be real. If there no other question?
I have one, please.
Yes, ma'am.
Um, a lot of this discussion has been around tenant owned, uh, I mean tenant occupied property. Uh, and in a community like West Point, we have a lot of people who own their own homes who struggle with util, high utilities and what they need to do to lower their cost. On an average, and I know you don't know a lot about this community yet, cause you hadn't been able to get access or you don't have access to the data here. But on an average, or maybe in comparison to the La Grange community, which is different than our community, what's the ratio of tenant occupied participants and homeowners?
Totally different from your community. We can know a little bit about your community. Most of them are renters, which was a shock to me. Especially when you look at the segment of low margin income. And I am still, and that are, another good, excellent question. I'm creating the data that they don't have. They don't know how many low margin income community homes are owned. So many of them are rented. So when I asked, I went to all the different agencies, and they could not pull that data for me. Okay? So now we're doing something to get it ourselves. But that, that's what we do. I was in shock that I could not have the data on how many homes were owned by low margin income families. We would be doing a study, and we would accept that to this community. This information is, is important. And when we finish, they will have that information. Because what we created in that database will also assist in making different decisions in the future, in the future to come. Do the same for this community as well.
I would venture to say that the, the ratio in La Grange would be higher for rental, renters than in West Point. Um, and that's, you know, really neither here nor there, except that I'd like to focus on it as something that will help people in general with their utilities, not necessarily renters or homeowners, first home homeowners. Uh, I'm probably, I don't know if I'm the biggest skeptic up here, but I'm certainly among them. And, um, as you know, when we met, I said, I mean, I, I, I kept asking you the same questions about cost and.
Yes, you did.
Who's gonna pay, you know, no free lunch?
That's right.
Somebody's paying. And I guess I've likened it to Habitat for Humanity, to Fuller Homes, to agencies that help people do better, raise, you know, live better. They, you know, Habitat for Humanity provides a house, a much better house than a person may have been in. And other than sweat equity on the part of the recipient, they don't pay. Of course, they, they, they pay a mortgage, they pay a mortgage once they're right. And, but, you know, that's their contribution, but you put them in a situation where they are better able to do that. They would probably not save the down payment and all that has to go into getting to that point.
That's right.
So I see it as a, a program, you can call it, not all of them, some of them are private programs, some of them are governmental programs.
That's right.
And it's about helping people. Anyway, you know.
The program is not free. The process and the formula makes it free for the resident and for the city. It is not free. We get a million interest rate for twenty years. And we tell USDA, with that money, we assure you, we can lower the utility bill so that it will pay for itself. USDA says, we've seen it all over the country, we like it, go for it. That's how we got the million. It's not free.
We've asked a lot of questions and that we got, I wanna stress the fact that we don't want anyone to think that we don't want people to, to live better. That's the goal, is to live better. Because we have a lot of rental houses that are, be honestly, not fit for the, some of them dogs to live in. And that's sad.
And I've been in those homes. Yes, I know, you telling, I was in shock for you.
Don't be.
Councilmember Thornton, I went in the home. Tiara took me to neighborhood, and it's unbelievable what you find out. I have the pictures. When we do a home, and Tiara will back me up. I said, we don't let them go in and take pictures and, and use it in news clippings and, and articles of this nature. When we finish this program, the pilot, and we present it to the city council, we show in a clipping, the work that was done by the home. You don't need to go in their home. You don't need to change how they feel about themselves. We all want to feel some respect for ourselves. So with it, you must show that you care and you respect humanity. So with that, you have points. When I went in, I was like, what? And well, are we walking out there too?
I got a, another question, I'm sorry to interrupt you. Just say a seventy, seventy-year-old lady lives in a home and she dies within five years. Okay, the next person comes in and buys her home, and they refuse to the agreement. What do you do in that instant?
There is no agreement after that. The agreement was done and the utility will pay for itself.
So is that, so when she, when she, she dies?
Yeah.
And so the new buyer moves in, then what?
It's not tied to the home, it's tied to the utility bill. Everyone is getting a little caught up in the wrong aspects. She can sell that house.
But then that next person is still responsible for that agreement.
When they come in, uh, I can't explain, too much clear. Soon as the electricity bill goes on, they may know nothing about this contract. It's gonna start paying for itself. The energy usage pays the bill, not the mortgage or a second on your house where you took out money. The utility bill, so soon as they flip the switch, they won't see anything.
I think, and it may be, I'm gonna say something, looking at it like this, where's the money extracted from? I think that'd be simpler way to say it. When they get to the city hall, the city hall and charger directing those funds to y'all.
No, the funds don't come to us, they go to USDA when it's completed. So you come in, the utility bill shows the savings, the utility company takes that savings out, that, that, that pays that bill, and the customer never sees it.
Well, the new buy, the new buyer would see a different utility rate than their next-door neighbor.
But, but the utility rate would still be factored into the savings. You see what I'm saying? They're gonna turn on their utility, it's gonna have everything in there that will save them money. The factor will be the same twenty-eight until it's paid. When it's paid, there's more savings to the customer.
So are you gonna keep up with that data as far as somebody else moving in? Are you gonna go in and train them that you can't, um, turn the utilities up to eighty in the wintertime?
We have a responsibility over that money, Groundswell, not you all, to ensure that whoever the resident is follows in the same pathway to make sure it's accessible. We have no choice, like I said, the million is on Groundswell. If this not done, Groundswell has to pay. So guess what? Groundswell's gonna make sure that they're educated, because that money is on our books, not on nobody else's books. So I understand your point, but I assure you as chief program officer to accept that million, we made sure that we were in a good place to take the million, cause no one's signing that without. That's not a partnership with this city, it's a partnership with Groundswell.
So you have given us some good information, and we've had a lot of good questions. But I just have a question. What are you asking, what two things, and I think you said you needed two things from the mayor and council. What two things are you asking from, from the mayor and council? And the other question is, when there's a problem, if there's a problem or concern, who do we refer the citizen to?
The director of Groundswell, that's even in their contract.
Okay.
And.
And so what are you asking the mayor and council for?
First question was, I answered your second one.
Okay.
The first one was, one more time, would you repeat?
What are you asking the mayor and council for?
We have provided you all with a memorandum of understanding. And, and it identifies that you would like to see us implement the program in the city. And with that, we take that and we add it to the funding that we gave from USDA to show that we will welcome this program. It has nothing to do with the attachments of the money or commitment of payment. And that's what the memorandum of understanding will show. And the letter that we submitted last week showing that no cost is on this thing. We put that in my address to make sure there was clarity, because we knew that there was some concern that that was not being cleared out.
Alright, anybody else? We're gonna move forward before these iPhones go dead and she runs out of videotape.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you very much. Alright, so new business tonight, we'll start with the city manager update.
Yes, sir. This is a new agenda item, I thought instead of me sending the, um, the frequent email updates, it might be better for me just to give a report at the first work session each month, and that way you'll have an opportunity to all get the same information, asking questions as we, as we go through it. Um, I've got, I've got a few items for you. Number one is, um, I know you all are aware that Chief Smith has, uh, put in his notice to retire on September the thirtieth of this year. Um, we have started the process of, um, updating the job description, create the advertisement, and we will start advertising the position on July one. And we'll advertise that through July July the twenty-sixth. During that time, we're, I've asked Chief Smith to help me organize a interview panel of EMS and fire professionals in the region to, to take part in the, in the interview. So July twenty-sixth through August fourth, we'll process the applications, score the applications, select finalists, and then schedule the interviews. Do interviews August ninth through August seventeenth. Then August eighteenth through the twenty-fourth, we'll review those. And then on August the twenty-fourth, I present candidate information to the council and make a recommendation. And you'll have then the September night work session and the September thirteenth council meeting then to, to consider the candidate, which will give us time to hire somebody by the end of the month. Any questions?
Yes, I know when we hired the police chief, the council would be involved in the interview process. Is there any reason that's different this time? Would the council be on that interview, or a person's front of the council?
Right. The police chief is the only position that we've, that the council's ever been involved in the interview process with. The ordinance says the city manager shall make a recommendation in the council, shall then have the ability to either approve or not approve of that candidate. So, you know, any, any of the other positions that we've done as far as department directors, I've always made a recommendation to the council.
Is the posting procedure supposed internally first and then externally, or do they run simultaneously?
Running simultaneously.
Okay. And it's for a period of, what is that?
It's about a month. It's the July the first through July twenty-sixth.
The posting is through the twenty-sixth?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. And do we have any internal candidates? Do we?
Well, we haven't advertised yet, so we haven't, we haven't taken any applications.
No, when I say candidates, I mean in terms of succession planning and people whom we have possibly groomed for bench strength.
We, we do not have a assistant chief or anybody that has, has a higher rank. We have three lieutenants, so nothing to answer that question's time.
In a situation of a tentative start date, I'm sure if possible, we may have to look at putting a interim fire chief in if it goes prolonged past Chief, current chief.
Yeah, I'm certainly hope if, if the council can reach a decision on the thirteenth, that, you know, we'll be able to get somebody that gives them two weeks to, to get here, so. But if, you know, I don't know if that, that'll occur or not, it could. All right, next thing I've got for you is the FEMA flood elevation. As y'all know, we've been working on that process since January of 2017. It's been quite a long haul. I've got several pages here of just the, the dates and the things that have occurred, but, you know, in twenty, in 2016, we received word from FEMA that there was no significant change to the flood plan. And then soon after that, we received the firm maps in early 2017, and there was a four-foot elevation change, a rise in the flood elevation in downtown. So we started working with EPD, who actually was the contractor that did the study in Georgia for FEMA. And through a, through a long process with EPD, through the end of November 2018, we got absolutely nowhere. So at that time, we requested that, that we meet with the engineer firm called AECom. They're the ones that did the, the mapping, the actual mapping of the river. And Congressman Ferguson's office helped us get that meeting set up, and AECom agreed at that time that they would help us do that, the work to get to FEMA at no charge to the city. And that was mainly because the state filed a lawsuit against AECom blaming them for the errors that had occurred, and AECom actually won the case. That occurred during that 2017, 2018 period. And so they wanted to clear their name and make sure that they were working with us to, to get everything worked out. So for the next year or so, we worked with FEMA and their contractors in trying to get all the data put together, go through the whole process. And then in April of this year, FEMA notified us that we had to include the city of Lynette, the city of Valley, and Chambers County, Alabama in the study, that they were not in the original study. And the reason they said we had to do that was because the elevation, there was a drop-off in the elevation between the, the Georgia line and the Alabama line, and they said FEMA won't accept that. So we argued that that wasn't a part of the original study, had nothing to do with us, and why should West Point and AECom have to provide that information? So finally, we once again had a call with FEMA, and that was on the fifteenth of June. And on the sixteenth of June, we received notice from them that, that our request had been received, and that West Point and Harrison, Troup County, we've received a final level of, letter of determination within sixty days of the email. So we're, we're hoping that within the next few months that we'll have this resolved after, after all these years of work. So, good news on that one. Next, MLK and Tenth Street, that project is out to bid. It is the demolition removal of all the existing signals, sidewalk and everything at MLK and Tenth Street, and then putting up new, new poles, new curb and gutter landscaping, all at that intersection. As I said, it's out to bid. Those are due by February, I'm sorry, Friday, July the twenty-third. Then we should have that to the council on August ninth, business meeting for, for your consideration of that, of that hopefully low bid. And that, of course, is a SPOSS five, Troup County SPOSS project. So that's how that's being funded. That's another project that took about two years to get DOT approval to do. On July the first, we will shut off the tank at the Kia site, they'll be, they'll be shut down. Tank will still be full of water, so for emergency purposes, it will still be available. It'll stay off through July the eleventh. We'll be painting the exterior of the tank. American Tank Maintenance is doing the, is doing the work. We have a ten-year contract with them to maintain all of our tanks. There will be new logos put on the tank, and it will be the new Kia logo that's going on the tank. They'll be same location they are now, but Kia pays for the logos to go on the tank. We do not. So be looking for that out on the interstate over the next couple of weeks.
Is owned by the city or by Kia?
Tank's owned by the city.
Can I put my logo on it?
I think it's about twenty thousand dollars. We talked about street paving previously. We got that project as with the engineer, and I did wanna kind of go over those streets again, because we, we get asked questions frequently about what streets we're looking to pave for this resurfacing. So downtown, Fourth Avenue from the state line to West Eighth Street, which is a short section of street. West Seventh Street from Fourth Avenue to Third Avenue, which is another short section, but those are in probably the worst shape in the city. Avenue C from Seventh Street to Frank Hall and Terrace, that's where we did the patching on C last year, and then the same on Avenue E where we patched from Seventh Street to Teal Road. Then East Seventh Street from Avenue E to MLK. Avenue D from Tenth Street to East Eighth Street. East Eleventh Street to Avenue D, I'm sorry, East Eleventh Street, Avenue D to Highway twenty-nine, that's a short section. And Pine Street from Highway twenty-nine to Maple Street, and Neal Street from Highway twenty-nine to the end. And hopefully, we'll have that for the July twenty-seven work session. We're getting close to having all of that done and put together for council approval. Last thing I've got, we received a letter today, late this afternoon, from the Department of Community Affairs, saying that they have reviewed the recent service delivery strategy for Troup County, and they have, they have approved that. We have an, an approved service delivery strategy, and we did not have any violations or any loss due to the extended period of time it took us to reach that, that agreement.
I have a question, Ed. It seems that we have had several zoning issues to come before us recently. Atkinson Property, the presenter tonight is...
Web Bartley Road.
Web Bartley Road. And the old West Point Road landfill issue. I asked in the last meeting about the cease and desist order that I understood the county zoning person to say had been delivered, hand-delivered to city employee. And when you all said you hadn't gotten anything, I thought, well, maybe just double-check my source, because I knew they said they had tried to, I mean, they had tried to email it, got the wrong email address a couple of times. And then there was a, a meeting scheduled with the chief wherein they were gonna meet and he was gonna hand-deliver it. Chief was not able to come and was called away unexpectedly, so he sent his designate. And my understanding is still that it was hand-delivered to that person. And I only bring this up because I think if it never made it to the appropriate person, whom I guess would be you, via the chief, or however, I mean, it should come to the city manager ultimately, we may need to take some action to make sure that we don't miss important issues like that. I think whether, however it was delivered, if it was served by the marshal's office, if it was sent registered mail, certified mail, whatever, you know, we perceive to be official, if that's the reason we're saying we not, we didn't receive it, then let's make an effort at least to inform people in the city, employees of the city, of what the expectation is, so that we are aware of it. I'm still appalled that council was not aware of it. And have, have we still not received anything, or you still not aware of anything?
We, we received a letter from Harris County with two concerns. One, that there was no electrical permit pulled on that project. And the other is that, that property is not zoned for the use of a range. However, we don't agree with that, and we've responded back to Harris County. We have not got a response back from them at this time.
Okay.
But cease and desist is not, I don't think that's, it came from the zoning administrator. There was no, there was nothing to cease on the property. In other words, we haven't done any training there at this, at this point. So again, we, we believe that, that we have, we have the right to use the property for that purpose, and that's what we're gonna pursue with, with Harris County.
And we have a right to our opinion, and all I'm saying is that whatever the other side is, you know, I would appreciate hearing both sides. I always say it's three sides to every story. And it seems that the information that I was able to obtain came from Harris County. That's why I asked the question in the last meeting, and the answer I got caused me to pause. And then when I went back to get some clarification, I thought maybe I misunderstood, and I didn't in fact misunderstand what I was told. So if, if we could just be a little more forthcoming with information that affects the city and affects the council, we're all kind of, you know, accountable for things like that. If there's something that we do need to cease and desist on, you know, maybe, maybe we don't. Maybe our opinion that we're not doing anything wrong is valid, but bring us into the loop on that. We've got three zoning issues that we've dealt with just recently, and one's still one very active one, the Web Warner Road.
What is the zoning issue with that particular project that's in question?
Now, all I'm saying is there is a procedure, whether we're talking about Atkinson House, whether we're talking about the Web Road project, or whatever. Now, that's the Harris County issue, I suppose, with cease and desist order. But if there's a process, if the property is zoned a certain way, there's a procedure that needs to take place before it can be changed. And there are questions about how that property got changed from one designation to the other. There was a question about how the Atkinson property got changed from one designation to another, from residential to commercial. And I've not been able to find any information on when it changed, if the proper procedure was employed.
It wasn't followed on Web Bartley Road.
I, I, I would disagree. The camp, the, the planning board and the council both approved the mixed-use zoning.
Okay. And in the last meeting, I asked if, I think it was Dennis was hearing, because I thought maybe he might be the appropriate one. I haven't gotten anything, so if it was, if you could just provide...
Have you requested?
I requested it in the meeting, in the meeting when I asked about that. So if, if that could be forwarded, I would appreciate it. That's all I'm saying. I, I couldn't find anything. It should be public knowledge, public record, but I'm not looking at that every day. I'm not doing that research every day. Dennis probably is able to find a lot more than, you know, any layperson might be able to find, or any one of us council people. So if you, if you could provide that, that would be great. I just, you know, I'm just interested as following the process, following process.
I can assure you I am too, and that we're doing our best to follow.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, does that conclude your update?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Oops, there we go. All right, the next issue is the traffic calming, so let's turn to those pages, and Ed, update us here on the traffic calming we're gonna do.
So y'all are aware that we put the policy in place for traffic calming, and we, we've given that to some citizens that have had issues with streets, whatever that may be. And we've not had any success with getting them to follow through with the process, because really, it's driven by the citizens. So I talked to the department directors and, and a number of complaints that we have from various locations. And we came up with four locations that we'd like to, we'd like to kind of kick-start the process to see if we can try these measures and see if they will prove to be successful in these, in these neighborhoods. Number one is, and I put four-way stop and three-way stop, some people call them all-way stops, but I'm just gonna go with a four and three. A four-way stop at Avenue C and East Seventh Street. Three-way stop at MLK Drive and Hatchet Street. A four-way stop at Avenue K and East Ninth Street. And a three-way stop at East Sixth Street and Bellwood Drive. And I put some visuals in there for y'all to, to look at. But you know, our policy is really heavy on notifying the residents that live in the area. So what I would like for us to do is just, the city staff will notify the residents that live in those areas, and then we'll have a public listening session to invite those residents to come out, talk about what traffic calming is, what we would like to do in those areas, maybe get them to sign a petition, because that's what the policy calls for, to say that they would like to have those things done, or not like to have those things done, we'll see. And then, and then present that information to the council at a future, a future meeting and see if we wanna move forward with some of these traffic calm intersections.
I know some of the areas, there is a need. We have not just complaints, but, you know, damage or things that are happening in those particular areas, especially Avenue K, and Mike, I think, a motorcycle incident that happened, that's probably my first year on the council, with those stop signs. You can't, many areas, many areas, but I think it would have probably prevented a little bit had it been that, those stop signs. Not Avenue K, but Avenue K and Hatchet. And Mike, you can all, you know.
Does anybody else have any questions or comments on traffic calming?
Thanks for your work, Ed.
Thanks for your work, Ed.
Okay, finally, we have the local option sales tax agreement. And I have even more notes to call on Alex, but, oh, there you are.
Trying to keep a low profile.
Oh, you are keeping a low profile. I didn't see you over there. Good, I'm glad you're here, Alex, and tell us about signing this local option sales tax two years early.
Well, the, the current local option, option sales tax agreement, this is an agreement between the four governmental entities in the county, Troup County, City of La Grange, City of West Point, and City of Hogansville. The current lost agreement is the same percentage, 45% to Troup County, 45% to City of La Grange, 5% to the City of Hogansville, and 5% to the City of West Point. The current proposal, and it's already been signed and approved by the other three governments, continue that agreement. City should understand, and the council should understand, well, I think it already knows, that if there's not an agreement reached, the agreement can be, and the division of the local option sales tax, sales tax revenues can be forced upon the two smaller cities, Hogansville and West Point, which would be less than the 5% that this current agreement provides. It would be based on populations and the population of the City of West Point, where if Troup County is less than 5%.
Surely they wouldn't do something like that. I couldn't.
Certainly appreciate your sarcasm.
All right, well, I'd love to hear what y'all think about this. Who would like, any questions for Alex or any comments regarding this?
I think it's time, we're going to need to sign the agreement. I, I think that's kind of a no-brainer. We need the 5%. We don't need to be cut to 2% or 3%. I don't like it, but you just have to do what you have to do sometime.
Anybody else, questions or comments?
What's your thought?
Pardon me?
What's your thought?
I don't like it. I don't like, the tactics that have been used through SDS, I don't like the tactics they use for lost. I agree with Jerry, we better do it. What can you do when you're, you know, when you're being bullied? I'm missing my words, y'all, but we do need, we do need to approve this. And I guess that's all I've got to say.
Thank you for fighting for more.
Yeah, yeah. Well, hopefully this fight's not over, but we'll see. But we need to do this tonight because the, we have a deadline of the 30th?
Tomorrow.
Tomorrow. Yeah, we have a deadline of the 30th to do this.
The agreement that has already been signed by the other three governments, and the agreement that is presented to the council here tonight, that would expire tomorrow if not signed.
Yeah, and this is the agreement for in 2020. This begins in, tell us a date there, Alex.
It would begin in July of next year. Well, yes, July of 2022.
2022, okay.
It would expire technically on the 31st day of December, two years following the next decennial census.
Lost can be renegotiated anytime though, y'all. SDS is a 10-year agreement, but-
And the, the decennial census and the current terms of this SDS agreement are coincidental.
Yeah, yeah. Okay. Any more, I don't want to cut this short. Anybody have any comments, any questions?
Say it.
It is.
And one of the, you know, the argument for the City of West Point is, is the daytime population and all of the influx that you have into the City of West Point and all the sales tax revenues that are generated by all of the industry and business located in the City of West Point, that City of West Point would certainly argue is much greater than 5%, rather than the nighttime rooftop bedroom population, which is within City of Troup County is certainly less than 5%.
And while we're on this tear, I would question the amount of sales tax that's generated in the county by the odd dollar general and a few gas stations in the county, whether they really generate 45% of the sales tax in the county. And the fact that they hang on to it and won't share it with a small town like West Point or Hogansville galls me. We have, you know, I was at Hogansville last night where they have struggled to build a modest city hall. Did a good job with it, but they scraped together their money to get, to get it done. And our lost, our dollars we get, we, we end up spending on recreation. So I, I'm sorry, y'all, this is not the place for this.
So is there any recourse? I mean, obviously, the time has ticked down to, we don't have a choice about signing this or not signing it, but so that we're prepared the next time this comes. And I know we're talking about a long period of time, but so that we don't find ourselves yet again helpless, can't do anything. Is there anything we can do, Alex, to renegotiate the way? I'm not talking about SDS, I'm talking about lost.
Lost is controlled by 51% of the population, which is La Grange and Troup County.
Somebody came up with that formula, right?
The state legislature came up with that formula.
Right, okay, so is there anything we can do?
Yes, we should, we should, we should get with our legislatures and say that small communities like ourself have been taken advantage of for God knows how long, because the counties have been collecting sales tax, I don't know how many years, 80, 90 years?
When are we going to do that?
When are we going to do that? I, I am working on that, I promise you, I am working on that. You know, again, it's probably not something we should be airing here, airing our dirty laundry right here. I'm going to make a mo, wait a minute, I'm going to ask for a motion to approve the local option sales tax agreement tonight.
Sooner.
Second.
Any discussion?
None.
Okay, all in favor?
None.
Any opposed? We have approved the lost, under duress, we have approved it. All right, y'all, that is it for this evening, a long, very long meeting. We have no items for the next work session. So I don't believe we'll have a next work session until the next go-around. But is there any announcements before we motion to adjourn?
Don't forget July 10th.
Is June 10th, here in the park.
Starts at 12 o'clock.
Yes.
And ends at 6:00. Fireworks in Lynette starts about 9:00 o'clock dark.
Any other announcements?
Trust Building Inc. is scheduled to have two training sessions over the next three months. I will provide information on those dates, and I would encourage you to put it on the city website, webpage, as well as any of you who have not been through that. I encourage you to attend, because I think it can be very beneficial.
I'm sorry, DeeDee, I missed the first part.
Trust Building Incorporated.
Okay, I just didn't hear the first part.
Have you been through the training? Have you, have you been through the training?
No, not yet.
I started it when it first came, but I was the youngest person in there.
You were in the wrong class.
Yeah. All I did, I learned a lot though, but all I could see was a lot of people that had a lot of grudges over a lot of years. And it was good that they was able to let it, let it off and let it be known in that environment, yeah. I mean, I learned a whole lot about Troup County, you know, and I can only imagine about La Grange, Troup County also, and I can only imagine what we would probably learn about West Point.
Not talking about the issue, but it's not the answer.
Exactly.
Not communicating about it, it's not the answer.
I didn't see any results. Just came out mad.
Okay, is there, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
The second.
Second.
All in favor? Anybody want to stay here? All right. Thank you, Alex.
Oh, all of them was like, I'm going to call you and we're going to go to lunch, and that's been what, five years ago?
Hey, thank you, appreciate your time.
I'll be here a lot.
I walk that back.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Hey, Cole, how you doing? I was wondering who you are. Good to see you.